Welcome this evening to the Fort Bend ISD Trustees Candidate Forum. My name is Christopher Bro. I'm a past chairman with the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be your moderator for this evening. This event is going to be live broadcast through Zoom and the Fort Bend Chamber's Facebook page. If you have questions for our candidates, please submit them on either the chat feature on Zoom or on the comment section on Facebook, and we'll do our best to get as many questions as time allows. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our candidates in the order on the ballot. We have Ashish Agarwal for position two. Also for position two, Rehan Ahmed, Judy Day, Nadeem Naik. And for position three, we have Addie Hettiger, excuse me, Stephanie Brown, Allison Drew, Rafat, Ulay Engelani, Kristin Davison Malone, Kristin Davison Malone, sorry about that, Kristin, and Adrina Moss. So the format for today's forum is going to be, the candidates will all have one minute to give you an opening statement. Then I'll go through a series of questions surrounding school financing, the reason the candidates are running, legislative concerns, surrounding education, some COVID issues perhaps, and some other questions. And you'll each have one minute to present the closing statements. So our candidates will get a reminder at 30 seconds and 10 seconds remaining from Juliette Messmith, our rule keeper here. And we'll just go on from there. So let's start at the top, position number two. And I'm going to turn it over to you for your opening statements. Ashish.
Thank you, Christopher, and thank you for the chamber for hosting this. My name is Ashish Agarwal. I'm running for the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, position two. I am a longtime Texan. I've been here 25 years. And Christopher, I was talking to you about not cracking Aggie jokes because I am an Aggie as well. I went Texas A&amp;M for my MBA, and I have electrical engineering undergrad also. I have two kids. Both my sons proudly attend FBISD schools. And my wife, 20 years. We've been, we'll be celebrating our anniversary this month, actually. In terms of my professional background, I've worked at some very large, very prestigious companies like the Boston Consulting Group, help companies solve some complex challenges. And I have the financial acumen and the management veritable to for this position. Community service-wise, I have worked both at FBISD schools as well as the broader FBISD community. And all that collective experience is what I'm bringing to the table. Thank you.
Next, Rehan. Oh, Rehan was not here. That's exactly why I called role earlier. Judy, Judy Day.
Hello, I'm here.
Oh, Rehan, you're here?
Yes.
Oh, so sorry. Rehan Ahmed, please.
Yes.
Your opening statement.
Yes, hello, everybody. My name is Rehan Ahmed, and I am also running for Fort Bend ISD School Board, position two. I've been a long-term Texas resident. I've been here for about 30-plus years. And I have, you know, 22-plus years' experience in the IT field, specifically educating our US veterans. So as an educator, I have helped the US veterans turn their careers into IT. I'm also a business owner. I've done, you know, I'm successfully running my own business. So that gives me a lot of experience as far as financial management and budgeting is concerned. I've also been fortunate to work with a lot of Fortune 500 companies like Verizon, HP, Compaq. So my background is in computer information system. And as an educator, working especially with the veterans, I've been able to gain a lot of valuable experience that has allowed me to work with a lot of veterans with the PTSD, other mental health issues, and other learning challenges. I have been involved primarily with Fort Bend ISD. I have two beautiful children, both of whom are attending Fort Bend School District. And I have my wonderful wife that I've been married for about 16 years. And I also have another baby on the way. So, you know, another Fort Bend student. So I'm really excited, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Rehan. Judy, your turn.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name's Judy Day, and I am running for School Board, position two. My family actually moved quite a few times, and we lived in different places. It's because of my husband's job. And we became Texas residents in 2007. But no matter where we live, I always volunteer in the community. I have been a parent volunteer for 13 years. And I started to volunteer in Fort Bend ISD since 2016, right after we moved to Sugar Land. So I've been going to the school board meetings and volunteer on campus. You know, I even bring the students to the board meeting to speak up. I have a master's degree in computer science, and I used to be an Oracle DBA. And I also have a Texas Realtor license. But I spend most of my time on campus. Thank you to my supportive husband. And the reason I do that, because that's where my heart is. I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Nadeem, for position number two.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Christopher, and thank you, Juliette, and all the people behind this, supporting this, bringing this up to the public. I am Nadeem Naik, and they call me Nadeem. Long resume for you, but I'll make it as brief as quick as I can be. I am a widower now. I have beautiful two kids, 42-year Texan, 32-year resident of Fort Bend ISD. My kids grew up in this environment here, so I'm very familiar with it. I am here to inspire. I'm here to lead, and I'm here to bring you fully equipped with my imagination. Why do I say that? I have double majors in MBA from Connecticut. And I also have been in manufacturing business doing in China, lived there, you know, many a times, traveled other parts of the world as well. So I bring all that to the table. Now, the most important part is our kids we are talking about. Now, what do we want to do for them is most important. That is, they are a diamond mine. And we have the diamond cutters who are the teachers. And this is where I bring all of them together and bring that experience to the table so that we can have a synergy in our board. And as well as the most representation our school board will ever have would be to bring parents into the picture. I'm here, I will be for you forever, and you can count on me. I'm a pioneer of radio talk show here in Houston called Straight Talk. I'm a YouTube blogger. I...
All right. Okay, thank you, sir. Addie, for position number six.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. I am Addie Halliger. I am your current Fort Bend ISD Board President. I have had the honor to serve in this community over the last six years as a trustee, starting in 2015. I ran six years ago in order to make a difference in the community. And I'm here today to ensure that we continue to do the work that we started in 2015. I'm a mother of two Fort Bend ISD students. I have been living in the district for over 20 years. When I'm not working and serving on this board, I work as an IT project manager for one of our companies here in Houston. So it's important for me that I'm here today to run for reelection because we've done some great work over the last six years. We still have a lot more work to do and would like to continue to lead our district through this upcoming transition that we're having right now as we move from one superintendent to the next superintendent and as we welcome new board members to our board. So I'm looking forward to this event tonight in order for us to really show the great work that we've done in Fort Bend ISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie. I don't know if you're on mute, Stephanie.
Okay, got it. Hi, everybody. My name is Stephanie Brown, and I would like to thank you, Christopher, for being here and being our moderator. Again, my name is Stephanie Brown, and I'm running for Fort Bend ISD School Board Trustee, position number six. By the way, I'm number one on the ballot. Once you get to number one, your job is done. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I've been volunteering in Fort Bend ISD for over 20 years. During that time, I have been PTO president at the community school since 2002. In addition to that, I have chaired the project graduation. I have, one of the things that I'm proudest of is forming a focus group. And we have implemented some great programs, some that you have actually seen at the last board meetings. And I'll give you a few examples, like early literacy. We have Title I. We have sign language that is going to be implemented at Marshall and Willeridge. So I have been collaborating with the chief of schools and bringing some wonderful programs into our community. And I'd like to take that same passion and give it back to all of Fort Bend ISD students and make Fort Bend ISD a district that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Allison, you're shot. Was I muted that time?
You were muted that time. That's okay, Chris. Great to see you. Thank you, Chamber, for pulling this all together. Hi, I'm Allison Drew, and I'm running for position six. I'm actually a former board member. I served on the board for 18 months through the pandemic. And while on the board, I served on the policy committee. I worked with many of our local community members, one of which is on this panel, to provide a voice and ensure equity in the community. A little bit of personal background on me is that I work as an enterprise data architect. And really, that's just a fancy name for solve big puzzles at the enterprise level. I do that by getting stakeholder input and mapping out a direction. When I'm not doing that, I'm a psych nurse. And because of that, I can have really difficult conversations in a respectable manner. And I can also have those conversations in five languages because really, there's not a conversation I don't want to be a part of. I'm married to our current director of fine arts, and I have seven twins that have just entered high school. So I am really and truly fully invested in the process to get our ISD back to normal.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Rafat.
Hi, my name is Rafat Engelani, and I'm running for Fort Bend ISD, position six. My number is also a number six on the ballot. I've been in education for past 34 years, actually. Have been resident of Fort Bend ISD for, again, 34, 35 years. I have three kids that have graduated from Braggate, Dallas Highlands, and Dallas Middle and High School. They're all adults now. And my experience started as a substitute teacher. Then I became a teacher, then diagnostician, and then licensed specialist in school psychology and nationally certified school psychologist. So being on the four sides of the table, I kind of know, feel the pain or the frustration being a teacher from a teacher's perspective, parent perspective, student perspective, and community perspective. I am a senior now, so that's add to my experience. So I am really excited to give back to the community as much as I can. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Let's go to Kristin.
Hi, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Kristin Davison Malone. I was born and raised right here in Fort Bend County. I am married to my husband, Scott, who also grew up here in Fort Bend County. We both graduated from Elkins High School and Texas A&amp;M University. We are now choosing to raise our two beautiful children here. I also have, and they are in elementary school. I have a nine-year-old daughter and a seven-year-old son. In addition to that, I have plenty of family here in elementary as well, middle school and high school, and recent graduates. So not only do I understand what it was then when I grew up, but also now, today. I am completely invested in this community. I know Fort Bend. I have a heart for the kids, teachers, and the staff. And I am the one who will represent all.
Thank you, ma'am. Adrina.
Hello, and thank you for joining and having us. My name is Adrina Moss. I'm number six on the ballot for position six. As a registered nurse of 24 years, I've had the opportunity to work with and lead teams of large healthcare institutions, including serving as chair of state level in local communities and committees. It requires a systems approach based on science and a holistic view of how family and community affects health and learning. My experiences as a nurse have allowed me to work collaboratively with interdisciplinary teams of nurses, social workers, educators, doctors, therapists, the community, and diverse populations as a whole to promote and improve the health and well-being for all. Those collaborations have often led to policy changes that have improved the access to care, similar to those policies for evaluating and implementing changes that improve access to equitable education. And I am ready to bring that unique perspective and experience to Fort Bend ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrina. Let's start off with our first question. Adrina, I'm going to start with you, and I'm going to work my way back through. But what do you perceive the role of a trustee to be? And how much time are you willing to spend per week volunteering as a school board trustee?
Thank you for that question. The role of a school board trustee is to provide oversight and guidance and work with the community, the teachers, the parents, and the overall administration to identify those best educational practices, to work within budgetary guidelines, and to provide the best education that we have to offer for our district. In terms of my commitment, I am a very committed person to any endeavor. So in terms of time, I am available to commit whatever is necessary to take on the role of a board trustee.
Thank you, ma'am. Kristin, same question. Real simply, what does a trustee do? And how much time are you willing to put in a week?
Yes, no, that's a great question. I believe the trustee is to be the face of the community in the school district and to be the face of the school district in the community, all while focusing on what is best for the kids. Believe the trustee works hand-in-hand with the superintendent to provide adequate policy and policies that implement the profile of a graduate. As far as time commitment, before I decided to run, that was a big deal for me to make sure I would have adequate time to do so with my two small children. Thankfully, I have plenty of family support, and my business partners have been very supportive as well. So I'm speaking to different board members. It can range anywhere from 10 to 40 hours a week, depending on what is going on. And I am fully committed to put in the time and to make the best decisions for the kids, the teachers, and the taxpayers.
Thank you, ma'am. Rafat, same question.
Okay. Well, as a board member, I have the governing body, and we look at all the data and then vote for the decisions, whatever is the best for our kids, our community, and our district. So that is what my role is to look into, looking at my experience from all sides of the table. I have developed those skills to look into, collaborate with the teachers, with the parents, with the community and board members, students, teachers, and then vote for the best decision possible. As long as for the time, I'm a retired LSSP. I am working as needed, case by case. So I do have time, and my kids are old, and they are on their own. So this is what my passion is. You know, I was a biomedical science, and I changed that the whole career to come into this. And, you know, this is what my passion is, and I am going to try to do the best. I'm not a, you know, I respect other people's perspectives and, you know, am able to accept that and go from there. So this is what I think.
Thank you, ma'am. Allison, same question.
Hi, great question. Yeah, great question. The role of a trustee is oversight. And the way that they do that oversight is they set policy, which I've been a part of writing for this district. Trustees also set the district's priorities, which govern how the district operates and prioritizes the work that gets done. The board also hires, evaluates, and fires the superintendent. And we're about to embark upon a journey to hire a new superintendent. And it is really important that we get the right candidate to fill that role. A trustee is really the voice of the community. They are what should ensure that the district provides transparency into all of its operations. And they should always speak from a community perspective, not from a board member perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Addie, same question.
And so the board's role responsibility is to govern. Our role is to oversight of the district. Our role is to hire and fire the superintendent. As a longstanding board member, who's been a board member for the last six years, I've had the opportunity of serving on our Vision and Planning Committee that actually came up with the profile of a graduate in order to set the guidelines and the foundation for our policies and our curriculum to be written in our district. The board, working on a board is a lot of time that is expended because you are working as a liaison within the community. When we go up on that boardroom and sit on that dais, we're not just representing ourselves or not even. We are entrusted by our community based on the communication and the advocacy, the work that we've been doing with the different stakeholders of our community. It's important for any person that's sitting on this board understands that we are entrusted with the governance of our school board.
Thank you, ma'am. Nadeem, what's the role of a school board member? And how much time will you be willing to spend per week volunteering as a school board member? And either I'm on mute, Nadeem, or you're on mute.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm back here. Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, let me talk directly to the voters and supporters because they are the ones who are going to put me on the School Board Trustee, position two. Nadeem Naik is the name. Everybody knows it. Now, the right way of approaching this, as I said earlier in my short bio, is that the kids are the most important assets of our community. They are our building blocks of society. And then come along the teachers. So as a board member, I have to listen to them. As a boy scout coordinator with them, student counseling, family counseling, listening on the radio, debating the people, I have come across that the best way to deal with this, I matter not. People who matter, they are the one I'm representing. How I represent in the best ways, getting the parents together, listening to the children. Nobody listens to the children. Everybody says they listen. But we have to go back to the children and listen to them, what they are saying. Then we take the teachers into that perspective. When we bring the teachers and the students together, something comes out. That is where now we get the parents' input. And all three put together, that's my job as a board member. How do I put that together? Is by collaborating with all other board members, saying, this is a priority, not my priority. Yes, I'm trusted with this responsibility, but this is coming directly from the community. So as a community server, as a servant to the community, as a servant to my school kids.
Looks like our time. All right, thank you, sir. Judy, how about you?
Yes, hi. Yes, yes, I'll try my best. So I think for a school board is really a governing body for the district. So they need to manage the budget. We have like $800 million budget for Fort Bend ISD. And then we have to ask the right questions by, you know, oversight, by asking the right questions so we can make the best decision for the students and for the community. For time-wise, I already put in 500 hours per year, and I am ready to go full-time. And if you'll be there for those long board meetings, you know what I mean. So I am ready. I make this decision not lightly. I evaluate. I consider all the situations. So I'm ready to make the commitment, like I already do. But I already, I'm ready to make a commitment to put in even more hours. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rehan, what do you perceive the role as a trustee? And how much time are you willing to spend a week volunteering to do this?
Okay, all right. So the Board of Trustees are there to provide the insight, as other fellow candidates have mentioned, to provide the insight on the policies and procedures. They get to vote on that. So we already, one of the things that I want to talk about right now is to ensure that we are of a sound mind. We are the leaders. We are the ones that are providing that insight. We have to be able to vote on different policies. There are different situations that may come up. And you have to be able to be critical thinker. You have to be able to make decisions that are in the best interest of all the stakeholders. Now, as far as the time is concerned, how much am I willing to spend the time? I have two kids that are both Fort Bend ISD residents. Now, as a parent, we have to provide them full-time attention, right? So here it is. Considering that I am a businessman and also an educator, I have one thing that I've learned is the time management. So in order for me to serve as a board member, I am fully prepared to spend as much time as needed because it is for the betterment of our children. That's what we are talking about. So yes, absolutely, I am ready to volunteer and spend as much time as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashish, same question.
Thank you, Christopher, and I'll keep it short, actually. One of the most important ones, which is upcoming, is hiring the superintendent, our next superintendent. So that is one of the key roles for the board. And then other than that, I'll put it as three things. One is around policy, budget, and oversight, right? And other candidates have talked about it as well. I wouldn't beat that horse. And it's really important. And from a time commitment perspective, my answer is whatever it takes because we're talking about kids. At the end of the day, this is a volunteer position, like you said. And I spend countless hours in volunteering in the community. So that's my answer, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for those answers. Ashish, I'm going to start back with you here and talk to me. And I want to hear, I want to hear a couple of things here. I want to hear, in your opinion, what Fort Bend ISD has done well given the COVID pandemic over the past year? And what ways can the district improve on what has been done?
Definitely. By the way, kudos to the Fort Bend ISD employees, the administration, for spending such a long time and hard work in dealing with a pandemic and a situation which is, I mean, no one has ever dealt with it, right? It is a very, it's once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully, situation. So kudos to them. They have done, spent a lot of time in dealing with it. So pivoting from, you know, face-to-face to online, it's not an easy task and with all the technology challenges that they have to face. And I'm sure there were budgetary restrictions and challenges. So I believe that's what they have done well. Now, in terms of your second part of the question, what could be done better? Or what I feel could be done better is communication and engagement. And those are the two big things for me. There are communications that come out to us as residents, as parents, as taxpayers, which leaves a lot to be desired for. I mean, it's almost like, here is what's going to happen. Tell me a little bit more why. And I understand, and my time is up, so I'll pause. And I'll continue in a later one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's go. Let's go, Rihaan, back to you. What, what, what worked well at Fort Bend ISD under COVID? What didn't work so well? How would you change it?
So considering the diverse community that we have in the Fort Bend ISD, we have come up with a lot of great ideas, especially when we are dealing with a pandemic in a situation like this. I want to give, you know, all the credit where it's due to Fort Bend ISD for dealing with such a, such a tremendous, you know, thing that no one was ready for. So the disaster recovery plan that Fort Bend ISD had was, you know, in my opinion, was very great. Now, there are certain things that could have been done better, like, you know, for instance, you know, the use of technology. We have seen, you know, talking to different parents and talking to different, you know, you know, students. We were, we were not really trained to be totally online. And that was one of the things that is, I believe, can be improved is the use of technology training to ensure that the students are getting their, you know, getting the education online that they were basically forced into. So training goes a long ways and making sure that students are interacting, they are getting their, 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 you know, they're getting their stimulation that they need.
Thank you, sir. Judy, what do you think?
Yes, hi. So first of all, I really, I have to give credit to all the board member. I actually feel very sorry for you guys. Those decisions are impossible to make, online, in person. You know, nobody's, it's, it's such an impossible decisions. I watch those board meetings, very long meetings. I have to give all of you credit. And also I think what they did really well is they react very fast, like very quickly. And then they try to accommodate all the students by providing, you know, free lunch. They offer all those free lunch. And a hotspot and a laptop. I have to give all the credit to, to Fort Bend ISD. What I think they can do better, first of all, I think the scheduling, I wish they can do a scheduling a little better so they can line up online, in person, and also the communication. I do agree, a lot of people are very anxious. Education is so important to all the children. But I do feel everybody has the best interest. They want to do well. So I just wish Fort Bend ISD will, later on, will do better in communication and open that channel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nadine?
Yes, you know, first of all, I salute and I thank the Fort Bend ISD for doing a remarkable job. Considering the circumstances that this was something which was, nobody was exposed to. And they did a good job. Now, question is, where do we go from here? There are certain areas where one can pay more attention. We don't want our kids to become zombies. And we have to come up with more creative ideas of communicating better with them. And at the same time, connecting with the parents. Parents, they have a lot of questions and sometimes they have to go in circles to find out where, you know, certain situation stands. So that has to be improved upon. But there is always room for improvement, no matter how much a better job someone has done before. So considering now we will be moving forward with this year, and as a new board member, I will put into place better communicative ideas and bringing the children back to school in much faster speed, ensuring that the teachers and the students are connecting better than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's jump over to our position six candidates. Addie, what, what did the school district do well and what can they improve on?
Well, what we did well was definitely, we, we pivoted. When the, when the pandemic hit, just like every, every other school district across the country, we had to make some decisions. And the board was already talking about how we can provide online learning for our students. Well, the pandemic just made that accelerated that process. We were able to give our kids laptops for those who couldn't afford them or who didn't have them at home. We were able to provide hotspots for our students who did not have access to internet. We also provided meal services. That's, that's very important to, to, to the educational academic services for our kids. If we're not feeding our kids who, who were once getting meals at our schools, we continue to provide for them during that particular time. What we could do better, what we're doing right now is still supporting our, supporting our students by understanding what those needs are that they, they have right now. We also are trying to figure out, where are some of the students? We haven't even heard from some of our students yet. We're still looking for some of our students to make sure that we provide the proper wraparound services for our, for our kids. We want all our kids back to school face to face safely. And it's important as we move to the next phase of this, this pandemic, that we keep the continuity of having me on the board so that I can bridge that gap, bridge that gap from.
Thank you very much, Addie. Okay, Stephanie, Stephanie Brown. I guess I've lost your vote as moderator because I didn't get you in on that last question about the role of the trustees, but you'll correct me if I'm wrong on that. So you've got a couple of minutes to answer this question as I, as I try to render back favor here.
Okay, 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 mister. You have gained my trust again.
Okay, good, good, good.
As a board trustee, they're responsible for adopting goals and prioritizing those goals. And not just setting them, you have to monitor them and make sure that they are actually being executed. You have to adopt the policies and also review the success of that, those policies by, you know, measuring what's happening in the schools after you've set them within the district. Hiring and firing the superintendent, that's very important. And we cannot base those choices on who's friends with who. We have to make it to where it's going to benefit the students and the parents. And they're, they're also happy with the choice, not because you're getting grease behind the scene or something like that. We have to have transparency. And we have to adopt budgets as a super, a board trustee and set tax rates. We also have to communicate with the community. That's very, very important. Because without the community, there is no Fort Bend ISD. So we have to keep them happy. So I'll go on to the next question. You said I had another minute, so you want to add that in?
I'll ask that question. Hey, candidates, I get everyone to mute your microphone, except to speaking now. That's everyone. If you don't see your face on the big screen there, make sure your microphone's on with a little X through the bottom of that. Stephanie, talk to me about COVID. What, what did the district do well? And what did they need to improve on in this whole crazy pandemic thing?
Okay, thank you for that question. From the outside looking in and not having any students actually in the school, but being a volunteer and attending those meetings, I think that the district did a good job in trying to keep the students safe and the teachers. And also they gave families a choice of whether they wanted to go face to face or virtual. I think that was very important. It would have been a good idea for the administration to listen to the board who were listening at the time when the parents were asking for aligning secondary bell schedules. And we know different schedules were failing, but I think we learned from it. And I think we are better equipped to do a better job the next go around. Should this happen again, God forbid it does, but I think that we all as a community have learned a lot. And when it came to, you know, the CDC and things like that, none of the board members, I don't think, are physicians. And we need to leave that up to the experts to communicate with the community, to let them know what is safest for their children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rafah, no, no, no. Allison Drew, I was going to get in trouble here. Allison.
You can never be in trouble with me.
Okay.
Yes, oh, certainly. So I'm going to take this time to actually answer a bit of the last question too. So yes, I was on the board during the pandemic. Can you hear me? I was on the board during the pandemic and I spent, I took, we had a board meeting every week, every week almost. So I spent tons of hours with my commitment to the board. So that's the part that I didn't answer. The second part of that is, what did we do well? Well, first of all, I do have to say that I was truly impressed with staff and, and what they were able to do. What I tend to know is that staff did rewrite curriculum. They spent their entire summer rewriting curriculum. They maintain, they remained flexible. That's what we did, right? For students and teachers' needs. And they really just kept them at the core. We kept thinking about everyone's social, emotional well-being. We provided things like meals, IT computer equipment, PPE. We got, as soon as we could, we started trying to get back to normal. Folly, some of the things that just did not go well is definitely things like the bell schedule. Well, what we, because we're, we want excellence, we pushed too hard. And that is, I see the stop sign.
Thank you, ma'am. Rafah, we're, we're on the COVID question now. What, what did the district do well? What do they need to improve? What does the district need to improve on? Now, check your, check your mute. Might have.
I'm sorry.
I might be too zealous.
So the district did very, very good and very well in providing all the opportunities for the kids and the parents with the computers, with the hotspot and lunches and all around. And I'm really pleased with that. Some of the questions that, you know, that we learned from this COVID. So we, we are a better person, better district, you know, and we know we can face a problem. So some of the things that it taught us is to give the teachers and the parents as well some training to how to deal with the frustration and frustration to keep the, keep the game going. So, you know, this is what I'm thinking that, you know, in addition to the schedule, we also have to put more efforts in training the teachers to overcome the frustration and parents as well, to give them the tool to deal with their responsibilities in addition to the new responsibilities that took over to facilitate the learning, online learning.
Thank you, ma'am. Kristen, talk to me about COVID.
Sure, Chris. With COVID, I felt that the district had a rapid response. And we quickly moved online and hats off to all of the staff, all of the admin, to Dr. Dupree and to teachers. I was thoroughly impressed with the rapid movement and the implementation and distribution of assets to students and to parents like myself. Now, what could have been done better? I think that contact tracing could have been done better. I think transparency regarding contact tracing could have been better. For example, knowing if a student was on premise or off premise, so that we have real data to make decisions. And then not aligning the schedules. And we could have supported our teachers and staff better. And those are things that I would like to see in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Katrina, COVID.
Hi.
Well. And, and what can they do better? I'm sorry. Yes.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you for the question. I think in talking to my neighbors and in the community, I think what went well is much of what others have said, the ability to really pivot quickly and react to the current situation in terms of getting students the, the necessary equipment that they needed to move to an online platform. In that, what could have done, been done better is recognizing that this is a learning opportunity, COVID, the pandemic, and perhaps looking at how we could learn from this in terms of just focusing on face to face. As a PhD prepared nurse and an adjunct professor with College of Nursing, I've seen firsthand where students enter into the university setting. And now either learning is 100% online or it's a hybrid. And so some of the things that we could do better is to better prepare our students for that type of 21st century learning as they move into the university setting, as well as addressing the digital divide that we continue to have in, in our communities.
All right. Well, thank you, ma'am. I'm going to, Katrina, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it back to you. There's some talk in the legislature of not allowing school districts, cities and counties to have lobbyists or folks advocating, paid folks to advocate on behalf of the district and in the legislature. What, what are your feelings on that? Are you, are you for lobbyists for the school district? Or advocates for the school district or opposed to that?
I believe that lobbyists have their place in a particular arena. However, education is specific to our, our future. And so when I think about lobbyists, I think about a certain set agenda. And I can speak for myself and my family, but my agenda is for the best education that this county, independent school district can provide for all of our students. So we should all have a shared agenda and that should not be driven by one person's agenda based on what funds they perhaps bring to the table.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Nadine, I'm going to throw that question to you now. The, the, Fort Bend ISD has traditionally hired folks to go in and talk to the legislature on the district's behalf. And this would be, there's, I believe, a bill underway to see that that doesn't happen in the future. What are your thoughts on that? Either you're on mute or I'm on mute.
Well, I have to get used to this. Sorry about that. There are two ways to approach this subject, you know, when it comes to any legislation. One is that if the legislators can listen to you, how do you do that? Not many people participate in that. Then you have to hire people to do so. I will be for this here, the reason being, because most people don't participate. So whatever the legislatures can do, however that is conducted, and it is done, and it is a force upon the people. Now, Ben, think about us as a trustee. We come here to represent people. Someone has to speak up to that forum. Superintendent is only management. But we, the representative, bring that voice and we bring that noise to the table. Similarly, if the school is not represented through the legislature in some form or fashion, that means our issues are not properly addressed. We have to focus on this here, that how do we best bring it to the table? I am for the lobbyists, the reason being because it's a school. And what is a school for? For our kids, our future. I think this is the way to go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Kristen, how do you feel about lobbyists for the school district?
I did read a little bit about that and it's something that I'm exploring. And regarding lobbyists, I mean, somebody needs to advocate at the state level for the students and teachers and staff and whatever is best for kids. So regarding the board, of course, I would hope we would come up with a team that would do that and go to Austin to advocate for our district. However, with that said, there may still be a need for lobbyists to fight for what's best for kids. Because they, kids are our greatest asset. And, I mean, I struggle with this question, I, I guess, because I'm not for them just advancing money. But at the same time, we have to make sure we're protecting the interests of our children. And so if it means we have to, we continue to have lobbyists, then I'm for that. However, again, like I said, I would explore this further.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
I'd love to guys understand that. I'm not one to act like I know everything because I don't. But I will tell you this, I will always review information, listen and continue to learn to then be more knowledgeable to make the best decisions on behalf of everyone.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Rafah, same question. How do you feel about lobbyists for the school district?
I am for it. I am for it. And like Ms. Malone said, that I'm not expert, but I do have, I'm confident that I have skills to research and listen and then make the big, best professional judgment and then vote for that. And we have to have some voice out there for people to listen to us. So if we don't, then, you know, it's not gonna come out and it's not gonna open up the chapter or open up people's mind to think about that because there are a lot of things that I don't know. But when I hear all these lobbyists and listen and and look at, then my my mind starts working and and all the sparks come and I go and research and see, oh, okay. So there were, you know, so my expertise are within the education, academic, emotional, social, but like, you know, I'm saying that it is for us to have someone, a voice up there. And then we can just kind of determine and look at it and collaborate and talk to other members and then decide. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Judy, same question. Lobbyist or no lobbyist?
So I actually, I'm, it's very, I'm struggling with this question because I know for the lobbyists, I think we use, if I understand correctly, we use taxpayers' money to to hire the lobbyists. So I do wanna to, because it's like, then if we use lobbyists, then basically we bring more politics into our public education. That's that's the part I hesitate to support the bill. But if we don't have lobbyists, so who will be there speaking for us? So actually, I'm right here with Kristen. I do not know enough to say one way or the other. I wanna, I need to know more information. But at this point, if you ask me to vote today, I really, I probably will vote for yes. But I have reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Rehan, same question.
Okay, so having the lobbyists is, I'm up for it. Only the reason because we need somebody to advocate, we need somebody to persuade and also to to promote the education. Now, keep in mind, education is our number one goal here as a Board of Trustees. Our job is to provide that insight. And this is where your sound decision will come into play. A lot of other, my fellow candidates have mentioned that they are going to research that and that goes with anything for that matter. Any kind of a policy, we always have to keep in mind, is it benefiting our taxpayers? Is it benefiting our children? We always have to keep in mind, our number one goal is to provide that quality education. And if by lobbying, if that makes makes our education great, I'm up for it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Allison, what do you feel, how do you feel about lobbyists?
Oh, I think that they're absolutely necessary. I think that that, you know, we had some great trustees that really went and lobbied our state legislature. Lobbying, how we are funded is strongly tied to our lobbying for our demographic. And Fort Bend ISD has a very unique demographic. We often do not fall into the sort of PAC structure for state funding. And so I think that it's not only a lobbyist, lobbyists form long term relationships with legislate, with state legislature. So not only do we need lobbyists, we need trustees that also lobby for Fort Bend ISD. With some of the recent bills that have come down from the state legislature, we've seen all sorts of cuts. So in my opinion, that I wholeheartedly believe that that is what we need for Fort Bend in order to ensure that we're getting the appropriate funding to grow our students.
Thank you, ma'am. Ashish.
Thank you. Actually, let's turn the question around a little bit and think a little bit differently, which is when we talk, what we are talking about is how do we get our fair share from the state legislature, right? And how do we make sure we engage with the legislature? How do we engage with our local reps? I mean, we have local reps, right? Fantastic reps, Representative Reynolds, Representative Jitan. And what we need to do is figure it out, how do we as Board of Trustees, right? Work with them, make sure they understand our needs. What do we need from a state legislature? And not just that, we need to actually, in some ways, ignite the community. Why should only be the seven board members be the ones who are actually trying to get our voices out to the legislature? It should be our constituents, right? Imagine how powerful that will be when the entire constituents is actually with one voice talking to the legislator that, hey, this is what we want, this is what we want for our kids. Remember, at the end of the day, it is about our kids, our children, how do we educate them? So that's my perspective in terms of lobbying and not lobbying is let's get more engaged with our legislature.
Thank you. All right. Same question to Stephanie. And after Stephanie's finished, then we'll go to Addie. Stephanie, tell us about what you think about lobbyists. And I might be on mute. Can y'all hear me?
Can you hear me? I'm having some technical issues.
Stephanie, why don't we do that? I'm gonna go to Addie. Wait, try it again. Now you're on mute. Unmute. Can't hear you.
Am I unmuted?
Okay, you're muted. What, here's what I want you to do. Stephanie, why don't you log off, log back on? I'm gonna go to Addie and come back to you. I won't forget you this time.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Addie.
On attack right now from every, from every entity right now. There's an attack on public schools. It is important that we have lobbyists that will go out there and help, help support Fort Bend ISD and every other public school district out there. When it comes to ensuring that we have the right funding for our schools, it is important that we have lobbyists that that will go out there and support us. As someone already said, it's important that Fort Bend ISD is a very diverse district with a diverse funding makeup. And when it comes to making sure that we have funds for our schools and all the programs that we have, we have to make sure that we we get our fair share of the funds. Right now, when it comes to making sure our kids get the, the district gets the funds for online learning right now, we're still waiting to hear what's gonna happen for the rest of this year on that, you know, for next year. So it's important that we have lobbyists to support public schools, period. It's a, is a, is a important role in our society as it states right now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did Stephanie make her way back on? Okay, did Stephanie make her way back on? Oh, Stephanie, you're there?
I'm still trying to get, I'm still having some issues, but.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can. Come in loud and clear.
Okay, well, let me, let me answer that for you because I do have an answer. And my, my motto is, it's all about the kids and for, by any means necessary, whatever we can do to make sure we get what we need. Until the state actually gives our schools the support we need, we need anyone and everyone's lobbying for our students and teachers. I think we as a board, with a board, if I am elected and I hope to be, we need to collaborate with other neighboring districts. And if we need to hire pros to help us, we should be able to do that. We need our legislature to start doing education right and giving districts the funding we need to keep up with mandates. You have to wonder why anyone would not want schools to be able to have professionals lobbying on our behalf. We need community members, we need board members, we need staff and we need pros to lobby on our behalf to ensure that we get what we need for our kids. Because at the end of the day, that, and that's who, that's who matters, the kids. Because why? Why does it matter? Because it's their time, it's their school and it's their future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ashish, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it back to you on, what's your opinion on the STAR test exams and the need for standardized testing in public schools?
So two part question, right? So and maybe I'll combine it, we'll see how it goes. It's, so look, the testing, there's some level of testing that's to assess the kids' capabilities, where they stand, where do they need to improve on? When there's testing around that, it makes sense. The way the STAR testing has evolved is it has become more like, and some people will not like it when I say it has, it has become more of a business. And that's the part that I have a bit trouble with. And especially, let's look at this year, right? And when you look at STAR testing done this year, I was talking to my kid, by the way, and I said, hey, in STAR test, I printed last year's material. I gave it to him. He's like, Dad, you haven't even studied all this. So the point is, are we going to try and assess our kids when the learning has been behind? So it does not really make sense from that perspective. And what is it that we are trying to measure? That has to be defined before we figure out what that type of testing is. Thank you.
Thank you. Rehan, how do you feel about STAR test exams, the need for standardized testing in public schools?
Okay, my feeling about the STAR testing or testing in general, testing should be done to assess what have the students learned over the course of time? That's number one. However, I am not for the idea to teach the test. A lot of times, what we see in our school is the importance of tests, STAR testing in general. Like, you know, you, they're so concerned about passing that test only. So a lot of times, parents and teachers are really heavily focused on, you know, teaching around that, around that test. So our focus should be more towards the learning aspect of it and to be able to make sure that our children are walking away with something valuable rather than just a simple, you know, a test, that's all you're preparing for. What's in the test is the only thing that you're, you're, you're learning or you're teaching. So that's my take on the STAR test.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next, I'm gonna go to Judy for the same question. And right after her, Nadine, if you could take over. Judy, go ahead.
Okay, so my thoughts on STAR testing is I understand the state, they require the STAR testing because they wanted to have some kind of evaluation. But I do not support STAR testing because I feel, I always tell my kids or students when I on campus, I said, please learn for the knowledge, not for the grades. So I do know Fort Bend ISD is actually is developing our own model of evaluation, which I, I can't wait to get more information and to be part of it. So in short answer, I understand why we're having it, but I do not support it. I wish we have a better model for evaluation. Thank you.
I'm next.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely, yes. Why? Testing is most important in life is that how much are you prepared for? Now, if we have issues with that, no problem, we can tweak the test. Let us prepare our kids. Our kids generally, you have gone through school, my friends, my voters, my supporters. And I have gone through the same thing in my life. We are never prepared for anything, but we can get prepared. Even let's say, some people will say that we are preparing for the test. That's okay. You, what are you studying anyway in the school? Our schools never tell you anything practical. We have to bring that practical aspect in our student life. For example, this is a wonderful forum where we are discussing this now. But look at this year, only the adult voters who will be listening to this and voting. I want the kids to listen to this here. We talk about kids, but we talk about in shallow terms. Let's talk about a holistic view about the kids. If kids are listening to this here, they say, Nadine Naik is my man, mama, papa. Listen to him, what he's saying because he's talking about us. Parents, parents are there to help the kids. We have to groom our society together. Test is absolutely must and yes, I'm for it. We can prepare our kids. Our kids are the foundation of our society. Our capable teachers are there to inspire and I'm here to lead them. Thank you so much. I'm on the board, Nadine Naik.
Thank you, Nadine. And Trina, Trina, the same question, standardized test. Give us your opinion on, on the test and the need for standardized testing in public schools.
Yes, thank you for asking that question. So from my perspective, I think we need to really understand and dig deep into what the standardized tests are trying to assess. Are we asking students to provide us responses based on the competencies that we're teaching? And have those students been able to really master those competencies? And how does it prepare them for the next level? For example, university or college or the next grade? How has the data been used to help our students? And does it truly prepare them for college level learning whereby the educational strategy is moving more towards competency based learning? It's always been interesting to me that the STAR testing and standardized testing doesn't really help students prepare for college level testing such as the ACT and SAT. They seem to be so far apart. And so as we move forward into the 21st century, we really need to reevaluate, are we measuring competency in learning instead of the act of taking a test?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kristen, what do you think?
Um, well, this one actually hits home. So in the state of Texas, this year, we're spending $90 million on STAR tests. That's a lot of money, if you ask me. And we, we know the kids are behind. We know that because there's already testing that's going on where teachers all across the United States and the world are talking about the gap. So honestly, this year, I think it's a waste of money. Now, Fort Bend, why I say that is because we use and optimize RIN 360. And RIN 360 actually provides more insights for teachers to find out how each student can grow. So they can identify unique needs for each student rather than being more concerned with the, the school as a whole. For me, my daughter, I tested her this past summer because I wanted to know how she, how, where she was at. And the child went into the test very confident. The time she got out, she was in tears. And she was in tears because there was so much information she didn't know. I think we need to spend our money, I mean, the TEA is regulating it regardless, but I'd rather spend money on educating the kids than taking the test this year.
Thank you, ma'am. Rafah, how do you feel about standardized test?
I mean, tests are important, yes, but in this situation, we have to think out of the box. So this is for the kids, taking the test with all this educational gap, we are not going to get a true picture. Taking the test of this, this particular test, spending all that money and we know the results. Frustration, pleasantness and actually self esteem going down. The importance, we lost the importance. And if we are standardized and we are checking this state from that state, it's like different states are going through different things, so we can't do that. So we already have enough data here to, to see where these kids are. We have so much data that we can see the place of the kids. So in my opinion, it's raised, but, you know, if they're taking it, it's gonna be just a baseline for the next year that, I mean, how much they progress or what happened or from the previous year. But I wouldn't use it for important decisions in the kids' life or education.
Thank you, ma'am. Running up my, Allison.
Hi, yes. So I think that what's really important is understanding what the STAR test is. It is a. It is a one-time assessment of the student's current place in the year. It's done once per year. RIN 360 is something that takes a look back at student performance. What we really wanna be doing is some, is, is doing exactly what Fort Bend has done, and that's to develop community-based accountability system, where we look for potentials with growth and how we grow our students. We set our own goals and our own measures. The other thing that actually COVID brought us, and I'm really excited to be back on the board and explore this, is that we now have real-time data of our students taking tests and doing lessons. I would love to see us start working towards true differentiation of learning for our students based upon the data that we have. COVID has allowed us to actually put, put, pull together and compile a year's worth of real-time data to grow students.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Stephanie, talk to me about standardized test. Well, not actually to me, but talk to everyone about standardized test.
Okay, thank you. I just got back to where I needed to be, on the computer. Thank you. Testing, I say, I, I told this to some board members when I was a part of the Fort Bend Leadership Academy in 2019. There's so much stress on the students, the parents, even the teachers, where they're strapped and they cannot teach the way they want to in order to get the kids to the level where they need to be. So, I remember back in the day when they had the hour basic skills test. And the only thing they told those kids was to go home, go to sleep early, wake up, get a good breakfast, and bring two number-two pencils to school. And that, my, I tell you, we didn't even know that we were being measured. We just thought, hey, we're gonna go to school, take this test, and we, we don't have to do anything the rest of the day. But as, it pertains to your question, I think we need some sort of testing to assess the quality of the curriculum, to make sure that we're getting what we need for the students. And, and how the kids are doing in comparison with peers. But high-stakes testing with letter grades for schools does not help move the needle for kids. Let's make sure we are focusing on delivering the best quality instruction and have the test be just a little thing for the kids that they need to do in order to see where they are. We need to find a way to hold our staff accountable while supporting our kids and not injecting so much importance on one exam. Because when we start grading the schools, what are we doing about the students? They still have gaps. So, is that test really that important? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Addie, what do you think?
I definitely don't want standardized tests for the whole year that will measure the student's success. That, that, that is not, that is not healthy for our kids, for our parents, and for our community, and for our schools. I do support and glad that I was part of the board that says, you know what? We need more than just a, some arbitrary person coming in and giving us a letter grade based on a, a testing done once a year. And that's why we are building that community, campus-based accountability, which will have different factors in it besides just that one test per year. It's important that, you know, when you're taking a test, especially a standardized test once a year, this is, it's just, all kinds of kids could be going through different things. I could be having a bad day, I could be having anxiety, I didn't, maybe I didn't eat this, that morning. And so, it's important for us to understand that we need to have different types of measures throughout the year to ensure that we are measuring the success of the curriculum. We need to work with our teachers and administrators to ensure that we understand what kind of measures need to be put in place to support our kids' learning.
Okay, thank you, Addie. I've got, let me, let me throw back another question, that's on a different topic. There are a few questions that've come through the chat, we hear it all the time. Single-member districts. That's, that would be that each, each district trustee is voted on by just the members in that district. In Fort Bend ISD, our, we do have particular positions, but everyone in Fort Bend ISD votes for every position. And I just, there was a question on there about who do I vote for or which position can I vote for? If you live in Fort Bend ISD, you vote for all the candidates in, in each position that's up. But, but Addie, how, how do you feel about single-member districts? In other words, that, the votes for that district come from that district?
I'm glad you asked that, asked that question. This district was built 60 years ago with a, one line going down the district. We have an east and west. It's important to me now, 60 years later, that we have a different, a different voting system. That was the single-member district back then, actually. And now, if you look at today, every 10 years, every other local entity actually changes how their lines are drawn, who gets to vote for who. Every 10 years, there's an assessment that's done. In Fort Bend ISD, we have not had the opportunity to even have the conversation around what should Fort Bend ISD look like in the upcoming years. I support single-member districts. I support the fact that our district has, has grown in diversity, it has grown in population. And we should have, be able to have people come from the different, what kind of, what, what, no matter what kind of lines they are, different geographical lines in our, in our district. We haven't had an opportunity to see what they even looks like. Is it a seven-member district? Is it four? Or is it three at large? We need the opportunity to have the conversation. It's time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ashish, same question. Single-member districts, what do you think?
Oh, what do I think? Well, so, single-member districts, like Addie was saying, we need to have a conversation. It's not, so, let me put it this way. It has to be designed and set up appropriately. It has, we have to have the discussion and the conversation, and what does that profile look like? What does it mean? Like, is it, we stay with the seven members that they are right now? Or we change it to nine, we have a few, where, single member, a few at large? What does that few mean, right? How does that work? What are the pros and cons? So, from my perspective, can single-member district work? Sure. However, we have to make sure we understand the pros and cons of the proper setup, right? We need, uh, understand, we learn from other places, but as either work or not work, before we make a decision, and for anything, like anything else, let's get into the details, because, you know, the devil is in the details. Let's get in the details, understand the facts, and understand the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie, same question. Single-member districts. I know that wasn't a question, but, so, are you, are you for single-member districts or against them, and why? And I think you're, you might be muted.
Thank you for that question. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
I can.
I would, I would like to learn a lot more about single-member districts. I've been hearing about single-member districts for quite a long time in the community that I live in. It is one of those things that seems to be for single-member districts. On the other side of the district, not so much. So, as a board member, I would like to listen to what both entities may bring to the district. Because not knowing everything about it, I'm not going to say one way or the other. I know for a, one side of the district, it would probably be a great thing because of the gaps and the not being valued. Some of the, some of the communities do not feel valued. And so, having a person that they can go to and target to share their concerns with. This has been a problem in our district. So, that's why single-member district is so important to certain parts of the community. And we have to do a better job at that, listening to everybody. That's why single-member districts come up. When we stop picking out who we want to serve and serve everyone, then I think we'll be a better district, and that may not be a, a question, and it wouldn't be a question today if the district and the board members were doing the right things for all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, what do you think?
Uh, actually, I, can you hear me? Okay, I am against, I am against the single-member district. Actually, this topic came up. I did talk to different people at different districts. Some people is from a single-member district. I talked to the board member over there. From the information I learned, the, they have a lot of backdoor discussions. Like, you know, my district needs this, your district needs this, so let's kind of help each other out. In my opinion, Fort Bend ISD needs to be united. We need to be together. This is a community, we need to do everything, we make a decision for the best of all the students. If particular area feel we, we, they didn't get enough attention, you know, I think that's really the fault of the, the board or the, the fault of the admin as a whole, not as a one single person. So, I do believe the board needs to be together, and that the district needs to be together, and that we need to be stronger, make the district as a whole and stronger. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's jump over to Etrina.
Hi, thank you for asking that question. So, again, just to reiterate some of what the others have said. We really need to know more about the desired end goal of what single-member districts will yield for our community in terms of representation. Our community is very diverse, multi, multiple ethnicities. And so, we have to make sure that as servant leaders volunteering in this role, we are able to make decisions that reflect the community. And if the end goal is specific to the total reflection of the demographic we serve, then perhaps that's something we should all explore in the, in light of having full transparency of what the desired end goal is. So, again, getting a better understanding and learning more about the desired end goal of single-member districts. Until that point, I cannot say I am for or against it. I, I can say that I need to learn more to make an informed decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Rehan, Rehan. What's your opinion on, on single-member districts?
Right, as far as a single-member district is concerned, I don't think that's a great idea either. Simply because we need to have trustees that care about the entire district, not just worry about certain lines that are drawn. And there's a lot that goes with it. Any district, you know, the, the, the entire school district should have the same opportunities. Every kid is equal. We need to make sure that they are provided with the same amenities. And also, all the kids, we gotta keep in mind that everyone attending Fort Bend ISD School District is, you know, should be treated equitably. So, I don't believe that single-member district is a great idea. We also have a lot of diversity. We wanna make sure that our representation is there. And having said that, I, I believe that, you know, we, we, we should definitely not have a single-member district. The more diversity we have, the better representation will have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Allison. Have I asked you this question?
Of course you can. So, I definitely think that this is a topic for much more discussion, that warrants much more discussion. I'm gonna answer it in two parts. Personally, as a current Fort Bend ISD parent, I don't want decisions to be made by a majority that I cannot hold accountable with my vote. However, as a trustee, I know that it, that this decision has to be something that's made in partnership with the community. We have to educate the community on even what we mean by single-member districts. I've heard several versions of it. And we really should be looking into options, providing options that really balance the, that enforce equity and that really are, are, create a better, more representative board that looks like Fort Bend ISD's population. So, with the answer, single-member district, as a trustee, I can, I want to hear more of a discussion. As a parent, I would like to be able to hold my trustees accountable for the decisions they make.
Right, thank you, ma'am. Nadine, single-member districts.
Yes.
Do we have them or not?
Well, it's not an open-and-shut case, so we will have to really examine this issue here. We are the seventh-largest district in, for, in the state of Texas, 82 schools. Question is, how do we manage and how can we manage it best? Best, when we say best, it is always in the interest of our students. Now, there are two ways of handling this. One is that we should have a referendum on this subject here. I'm not the one who's want to decide on this subject. No matter how much study I will, and interest I will take in this year as a board member, but I would rather like to see what the parents think of it, because they are the ultimate supporters and beneficiaries of this and collectively make the, the society. Now, as a personal thought here, of course, I will make a case, and then, and I always like debate on this, on all aspects of what I handle, is that how do we best manage the school? The way we can do is that the parents play that pivotal role in here, saying, we are all answerable, no matter how we look at it. So, what we'll do is we'll bring into discussion here, we'll tell them what single member will do as, as a whole in this community here. Fort Bend County, we are looking at. We are resident of Fort Bend County. So, all our fortunes go up and down with the residents of the Fort Bend County. So, I think collectively, we should look at this subject here and then open it up for debate, not something which I think board member should handle. Let the people decide of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, Rafah. What do you think about single-member districts?
Okay, so, like everybody else is saying that I need more, I need to do more research. But on top of that, I am for to foster the equalities, you know, background of the students, cultural, socio-economical, you know, differences, learning differences. And we have all up here. Since my quiz starts going to Fort Bend ISD, this is something that I learned, that we have multicultural festivals. We don't have a particular multicultural. So, we have to look into that, and if we don't have representatives or we don't listen to the voices of different cultures or different, you know, whole community, then we will not be able to make, you know, sound decisions. So, I am for, I'm not, I mean, single districts, member district is not something that is as effective as, but then again, you know, I need to do more research. But we have to look at every, all the, all the, you know, equalities, background, abilities, all of that. So, yeah, so, and that's come from the, from the community as, you know, all, not just piece of it, or not just one person.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Kristen. Single-member districts or not?
All right, thank you. So, I'm opposed to single-member districts. Pretty much everything Judy said, I think, is on point. And I think Stephanie had a really good point as well, that it's if the board is doing their job and they're representing all children or all stakeholders, that's what we're interested in. And essentially, what I guess I'm trying to tell everyone is make sure when you're voting that you're choosing someone who genuinely cares and has cared about the entire district. That somebody who listens and who is the right choice, that will represent all. Because when it comes to our kids, we shouldn't be playing politics. And this election is nonpartisan, and if we do, if we move to single-member districts, we will do what HISD has done, and we will create division, and there is enough of that in the world today. Right now, it's a time for us to come together, work together, unite, and get our district on the right track.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Well, let me, let me turn this question to you, Kristen. We're, we're about to get a new superintendent. Dr. Prey has served the, the district in many different facets, from CFO, budget director back in the day, to superintendent. But as a trustee, what would you be looking for in a new superintendent? What qualities do you think, give me three qualities you think a new superintendent ought to have?
Number one, accessibility to teachers and staff. They have They have voiced that to me. That is one thing that has been overwhelmingly consistent from teachers. When I speak to them, they feel Dupree listens. So I would want a superintendent who is willing to be accessible and have those, um, channels and means. Number two, business acumen. This is a very large district that is diverse and it is imperative that the man or woman who sits in that seat, um, has the business acumen and financial acumen to manage the district. Number three is empathy and compassion. We're in the business of children. In the business of children, we can't just be metrics and business. At the same time, we have to have compassion for our children so that we can continue to nurture them and grow them to, to exhibit the profile of the graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rafat, I'm going to turn this over to you. Give me three things you're looking for in a new superintendent.
Okay, strong leadership, uh, and availability, uh, open door. And, uh, you know, uh, listen, and, uh, all of these qualities needs to be in the leader that, you know, have to listen to others' perspectives and then make decisions based on, uh, based on, um, the, uh, powerfulness of the, uh, material. And again, um, you know, as Malone said, that these, these qualities are, if we are accessible to the community, that's what, that's what we are the servant. We are not the, you know, leaders are the servants. So, uh, they have to look at and decision-making on the spot, uh, how to, you know, for crisis. These are some of the things and we, Dr. Dupree, this did a very great job. And these are some of the characteristics that we have to look into as a superintendent.
Thank you, ma'am. Allison. What are we looking for in a new superintendent?
Well, once again, it's another one of my two-part answers. So I'm going to first say that I really believe that as a trustee, we really need to be reaching back out to the community to answer this question. I mean, it's the community that will drive what we, what we want in a superintendent. Is there, I, as a trustee, I am their voice. And that, in, in my sole role is to listen to them and bring those, bring what they're looking forward, um, to, into this search. Personally, I'm looking for, you know, if I'm as a parent of, of students in this ISD, I'm looking for a superintendent that will mitigate change, that will retain our staff, that will, that will prevent, uh, any sort of attrition of our staff. That will really kind of come in and, and do what, what I was often accused of on the board, listen politely before making any action. You know, we really need someone that kind of understands the unique Fort Bend way of doing things so that we can continue to build upon the, the strides that we made. And at the same time, you slow the pace. We've had a tremendous change, uh, slow the pace and not cause undue stress on our system.
Well, good, good luck slowing that pace, uh, of student growth. Ed Trina, what, what?
Not a student worth of change.
Yeah. But what, what are you looking for in a new superintendent?
Um, I think our superintendent should be a visionary, um, able to be innovative and, and a transformational and servant leader and willing to take on, uh, take the district into twenty-first century pedagogy. Much of our education is based on twentieth century, um, learning systems. And we really need to be, um, exploring more of innovation and science to move our children into global education. Um, in terms of, uh, the next characteristic, visibility and approachability in terms of being able to, uh, interact and, uh, be visible in the com- community and connect with all of the community, the students, the teachers, um, faculty administration, not just at the school or at the district, but get out into the community. And of course, uh, last but definitely not least, humility. Being the change agent and prioritizing, um, um, the ability to have a district that provides top-notch learning for our future leaders.
Thank you, ma'am. It's, it, uh, Stephanie, Stephanie Brown. Tell me what the next superintendent looks like.
Thank you, I certainly will. In a superintendent, we first need to look for clean leadership, leadership. And that means being honest, truthful, no matter what. Knowing that we could trust whatever the superintendent says, good or bad. We know that it's the truth. We need someone with an educational background who understands what life is for our classroom, uh, teachers. We need someone who speaks to parents, not at them. We need someone who will listen to the community and the staff and make appropriate changes when needed or called for. We need someone who will respect our teachers and our students and behave as such. We need someone who understands the diversity and disparity in our district and someone who will think outside of the box and will be willing to fill the gaps as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Addie, that goes to you. What? Who, what are you looking for in the next superintendent?
First of all, I'm looking for, um, to hear from the community. And so today, we authorized the survey to go out. So hopefully everyone that's on here and that's listening, it will fill out that survey so that we can hear from you all. And so as I'm leading this, uh, this superintendent search, one of the things, there's so many characteristics that we are looking for in a superintendent. But it's important that we have someone that is caring, someone who through his or her actions is able to create an atmosphere of trust, especially with our teachers, our administration, and within our students. We need a true leader who will come in and offer new ideals, who can complement also established work that's already been done, um, in the district. As well as someone who can address the gaps as well as the highs in our district. So someone that can, that shows that experience is what we're looking for in a district. So once again, I ask that you all go out and do that, fill out that survey so that we can hear from you as well as we make this decision. It's a very important decision for our district.
Thank you, ma'am. Nadine, what are you looking for? What are you looking for in a superintendent?
Well, 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 you know, we can, we can literally look up the definition. A person should have trade for this kind of a position. In the Webster dictionary, we'll give you all. And everyone will be chiming in as they are. The, I would say the one, the attributes which stands out. Let's look at the Fort Bend County, uh, Board up till now and the vision. It says that, uh, this person should be of, uh, someone who can inspire. So we definitely want, and then we take the word again, look up in the dictionary, what would be the word inspire means. Someone who can project. The most important thing is when the students are in the, in the classes and the teachers are there, uh, sharing the knowledge with them. It is, they look up to a person who says they inspired by. So we need someone of that, uh, with that caliber. Then of course imaginative, we are living in a COVID environment. How do we come out of it while we are still in it? What are the, this particular person is equipped with? Equipment comes with knowledge, comes with experience. So we will have to look at all those attributes here. And Dr. Dupree has done a wonderful job and I thank him for this wonderful thing. And they are tall shoes to fill. There will be lot of candidates who will be looking on. But as a board member sitting on the board for my position two area, I can assure you that it will be the people's choice. It will be the right choice.
Alright, thank you, Nadine. Rehan, let me ask you that same question. What are you looking for in, in a new superintendent? And, and maybe what do the other guys haven't brought up yet?
Well, here's the thing, being an educator for the past twenty-two years and also being a businessman, I've often, uh, been in that part where I have to hire people, right? So what are the things that we are looking for in an individual is somebody who is a leader, not a manager. We have enough of that. We want to make sure that somebody who's leading by their vision, somebody who's sharp enough, who can take responsibility, who can be held accountable, who can take us to the next level, who can provide that far sightedness. You remember, we have to make sure that we are dealing with Fort Bend ISD. Our children's education and their future is at stake. So we want to make sure that we hire a superintendent who can lead us, get us to the next level. Fort Bend ISD is great. I'm, I'm, you know, my kids go to that. I want to make sure that I, I hire an, a, a superintendent who's going to lead and make my children to be the next CEO of major organization. I want my children to be the next, you know, uh, you know, innovators. So that's the kind of person I'm looking for. That's the kind of superintendent I'm looking for, who can lead us, get us there. Remember, we are dealing with a lot of different economy globally. So we want to make sure that we are providing that, 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 that leadership through the, you know, through the use of, uh, our, our superintendent.
Thank you, sir. Judy. What are you looking for in a superintendent?
Yeah, so I think everyone already gave a lot of good suggestions, so I will just, uh, build on that. So to me, uh, the first thing I look at is, uh, the person needs to be very honest because this is a education and honesty is one of the most important thing. And being an honest person, um, the, I'm looking for the superintendent willing to admit the mistakes and willing to listen to the community and build up the trust. And another, a second one, second, uh, thing I'm looking for is someone willing to support the teachers, willing to, uh, have their back. You know, I think that's will, uh, build up a strong district. The third one, I'm looking for someone who has their heart for education, uh, who is willing to take action for the best interest of the students and who are not a politician, uh, who is willing to, to do things, not just to talk. I think that's the three things I am looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Ashish.
Thank you. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm.
I'm ready because this is.
You're ready?
One of my top priorities for my platform because, and by the way, a lot of candidates have dropped a lot of software skills and they are fantastic, they're good. From my perspective, being in leadership roles, twenty-plus years, working with CEOs, SVPs and, and companies, let me share three things. The first one overall is, and before I share three things is, we need to have, the person must have demonstrated proven record. It's not that I will come and do this. They must have a proven record to do things. The biggest thing is, they must be, have shown that they can, um, execute and operationalize a plan. We just went through talking about the board, uh, uh, what's the purpose of the board, right? So this is the captain of the ship. They must have demonstrated in a large, uh, district, in a large organization, they have the financial acumen, like, uh, Kristen said. They have ability to operationalize, right? Second is, have they, uh, demonstrated that they can engage with different stakeholders? What are the mistakes they have made, right? What have they learned from it? How they have pivoted from it in terms of making changes? And then the last one is about, because it's a diverse community, I see the stop sign, is it has to be inclusive. What is there, uh, and it has to be proven. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, candidates, um, I, I appreciate the, the, the input, uh, and the frankness which you've talked to us tonight. Uh, as a Chamber of Commerce, we, we understand that the Fort Bend Independent School District is, is one of the largest economic drivers in our community. With, without it, uh, Fort Bend would not be where it's at. We, we, we feel very strongly that the school district built this, uh, built this county by, uh, addressed by attracting people to it, uh, quality people to it. We have a wonderfully diverse community and it is changing every day. I was teasing with, uh, Allison earlier, I think about, uh, you're not going to stop the change. Of course she knows that, but, but we are growing. The district of today, Fort Bend of today, does not look like it looked like six years ago, twelve years ago. Um, and, and I use six years as sort of two terms, if you will, of change. As we wrap up, as we close tonight, I, I'd like you to, to give folks, uh, sort of a, uh, two things. Make your last pitch, but, but what I'd really like to do is, is see what your, um, what your goals are, uh, for this district, uh, for say, the next six years. What, um, yeah, that's it. What are your goals? Where do you see the district? Where do you want to, what do you want to be a part of bringing the district to in the next six years? And I'm going to start, I'm going to, I'm going to start, start the end, if you will, with, uh, uh, Nadine Naike. Nadine, are you with me?
Let me.
I need, I need you to get your radio producer here, man. That's what I need to do.
Alright, thank you so much and thank you all the participants. And let me talk to my voters and supporters out there that why you want Nadine the dream. Naike is my name, which you'll see on the, on the position two side. Bottom line, the person you want is a people's person. The goals we are setting is for the future and the goals are, there is overcrowding, which we need to manage. We are going to get the superintendent, there is no particular order, which one it prioritize. All of them need focus, attention, and that's where I bring it. As, as a broadcaster, as a peace activist, as a, the student, uh, counselor, as, uh, going out for Boy Scouts, as, as a, a family counseling, I bring in all that, which perhaps nobody else will be with my age in account. The time I have at my, on my hands is plentiful. I have volunteered for ARP, I volunteer for hospitals, I volunteer for anywhere I get the opportunity to volunteer. So this is an opportunity to serve the community. But most importantly, what you see in me is what you will find, that once on the board, it's not me talking. That's the most important thing one must understand. And I am going to bring in the you, the people, to tell us your problem, hearing what your, how you want to be, the problems to be addressed, and I will make it up. I will bring it up to the board and we will bring something which will be suit your particular needs here. Now, with my MBA background, being a CFO in the past, managing businesses myself, in the manufacturing.
Alright. Thank, thank you, sir. Alright, very good. And I'm, uh, playing with my phone here. Judy. Where, where are you going to bring us in the next six years?
Uh, so for me, I picture in six years, um, I wish our Fort Bend ISD can be a community that we all work together. The reason I make that comment because, uh, many board meetings I attend, uh, so most of the time it's very few public audience. But, uh, from time to time, we have a group of people showed up. Uh, they are very angry, uh, unhappy. So I, but I do believe, uh, in order to become a stronger district, we need to all work together, all work together for all the students. Another thing is we need to give the students very positive, even they choose different pathways, but very positive and strong students. And, you know, that's, that's really, I picture our, uh, Fort Bend ISD can provide and we are very diversified district. And we all, we should use that as our advantage to provide, uh, you know, see different citizen, you know, the strong citizenship for, for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rehan, I'm at.
Okay.
Same question.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted, uh, to say that my name is Rehan Emmett. And remember, I'm running for Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, position two, and I am number one on the ballot. I also want to say that I am not a career politician. I'm not a politician by any, uh, you know, by far off. Uh, I have a career in, I, you know, in education, which spans over twenty-two plus years, more specifically in information technology and also in, in business. So, which has prepared me for this position. And also working with our US veterans, which what I've been doing very satisfyingly for the last six years, uh, has helped me, taught me a lot of different valuable lessons, how to deal with students that are going through PTSD, mental health issues and other, uh, you know, I've been a part of other committees as well, which dealt with our, uh, prisoners of wars or MIA. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we are doing something for our community and that is something that I am fully vested in. I have two beautiful children that are going to Fort Bend ISD. And as your next board member, I want to ensure that your voices are heard and we want to make sure that we are. and we want to make sure that we are making Fort Bend ISD, we are keeping it a great school board district. Thank you all. Please remember, I am number two, I'm sorry, number one on the ballot for position two. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Uh, Ashish Agarwal.
Thank you sir. So regarding your question about vision, six years, um, want to empower kids to succeed. I know it seems like a tagline, but what that means is if there are kids in schools that are already excelling, let's make sure we get them the resources and the capability so that they go even higher. And then the kids in the community that's not uh there, help them support. So that's what it means. In terms of why me, I mean, very quickly, we should actually look at the, uh, profile of the graduate that we have and should apply it to the board members and the candidates, right? I'll, I'll pick a couple. Servant leader, that's me. I have been in the community, I've done, I, I enjoy, I love, and I learned from the community work that I do both within FBISD schools as well as the broader FBISD community. And another thing is about, from a leadership perspective, I understand, I've worked with leaders from large companies. Remember, this is a billion, almost billion dollar budget, right? You need someone who understands it. Dr. Dupree, I mean superintendent, that's 300 kid plus compensation. You need people who understand and who have worked with that caliber individuals. And that's me. I have worked with all the leadership and I see the stop sign. Again, Ashish Agarwal, FBISD, running for position two. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Atrina, Atrina Moss for position six.
Thank you. Uh, I am Dr. Atrina Moss, um, trained, uh, trained PhD prepared nurse and educator. My principles and um work experiences are founded on advocacy for individual students, educators and the community, being the voice for those who are less fortunate, underserved, underrepresented and on, are unable to advocate for themselves. So I am um number two on the ballot. Please go to my website atrinaforabettemorrow.com and you tell me what your priorities are for me to serve you on the board. In terms of what I like to see, I like to see for uh the district to provide more of a physical, psychological and emotional well-being, uh, well-being for all of the students after the trauma of learning in a global pandemic. I like to see that every student is insured uh access to equitable education and the opportunity to learn, thrive and excel. And I'd like to see uh more excellence and innovation whereby we uh expand upon the opportunities to follow evidence-based practices in education and curriculum design to provide students with access to 21st century state-of-the-art resources and technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Kristen, Kristen Malone, tell us your plans, tell us your goals.
Yes, sir. All right, um, in 2016, 2017, that's what ignited my involvement in FBISD. I learned what a peg school was and I learned what um an underperforming school was. I started studying it. I wanted to understand and grasp, grasp the why. With that, um, I fought hard so that those children could have opportunities to at other schools within the district. Now, why do I tell you that? I tell you that because I feel like everyone now has the same issue and we need to come together as a community and engage the public, engage retired educators. We need to engage um the professional, um, our corporate volunteers and there's so many more. And we need to come together and make the schools a place of community where we can help and assist the teachers and together bridge the gaps. And so I tell, so please visit MaloneForFBISD.com and you can email me as well, MaloneForFBISD dot at gmail dot com. And I'd love to meet with any of you and answer any questions and learn more. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, Rafat Jalani, what are your goals in the next six years?
Okay, Rafat Jalani, lifelong educator, mother of three, proud mother of three, Fort Bend ISD graduate. Uh, overseeing a school in third world country, lot of decisions to make. Um, three goals, focus, think out of the box, fiscal responsibility, solution of unique problems by collaboration with teachers, with parents, with community, with definitely students and uh board members and principals and all of that. And foster and cultivate uh the equality, students' background. We have to look at this student backgrounds. We have to look at the, their ability differences, their, uh, their learning differences, their social emotional differences. So it all comes and then uh being, being those, having those leadership and being a teacher, mother, student and uh diagnostician and uh psychologist, uh, licensed specialist in school psychology. So I have all those skills uh for proposition six, number ballot on number six. So just, you know, and then all this qualification, you can go and look at my website and it's all there. So I'm not going to repeat that. Thanks.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you ma'am. Stephanie Brown, talk to us about your goals.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned six years. And um, a lot of people know me from coming to board meetings, speaking up, speaking out, advocating. I'm not afraid to, to uh speak up for the underdog. I'm not afraid to speak up for anyone. I've taken a little bit of my experience and my goals that I've uh implemented and executed in one small community and I'm ready to go and execute that abroad in all of Fort Bend ISD, not just for my students, but for everyone. And I will just say, a sample of some of my advocacy has already been implemented. The block scheduling started off with my focus group, the Marshall Advocacy Focus Group. So for those of you who think that I'm just in a little box, you're wrong. I'm ready to go out there and support each and every one of you and make sure that everyone has a seat on the table because you know why? I know what it feels like not to have a seat at that table. So I'm going to make sure that every community, no matter who you are, where you from, or how much money you have, where you live, how big your house is, you have the right to say what your student needs. Nobody can speak for you. Not anyone can tell anyone what's good for your students but you. So I welcome you to vote for Stephanie Brown, number one on the ballot. Don't go any further because once you get to number one, you're done. I'm qualified, I'm committed, I'm confident, I'm competent and I'm your candidate of choice. Vote for Stephanie Brown. You can reach me on my website. I'm with you, I'm for you and we're going to get this done. One and done. Remember that. One and done.
Thank you Stephanie. Uh, Allison Drew, tell me, tell me about your plans for Fort Bend ISD.
For the, for the next six years, I was waiting for you to say that because that means I've won two elections. Um, so, so yes, you know, i- it's like that, that my favorite, one of my favorite little stories when I was young, the three bears. Vote for me because I'm the one who's just right. I'm at appropriate balance of having just enough board experience to hit the ground running and carry us forward without weighing down our future with methods from the past. But trained and well versed in how we oversee uh through policy. I have been identified at the state level as a leader and I'm one of only four people in this entire ISD that can hold an officer position. I'm committed to getting our students back, staff and community back to normal, mitigating change while growing our students, um, implementing, because we're already on a block schedule. High school principals that I talk to, they want to maintain that block schedule. Uh, so that's what I mean by mitigating change. I'm committed to preventing staff attrition as we rule a new superintendent. I'm still new enough in my board commitment to have the bandwidth to stick with the superintendent a- as they transition and grow. And I'm a forward thinker that will provide stability and for those of us that are parents, we know that what we need to do right now is lift this veil of exhaustion that we're feeling by mapping out a coherent, clean, English, transparent parent plan. Sorry. That's why the choice is me, Allison Drew.
Thank you Allison. Addie, Addie, talk to me about the plans for the next six years for Fort Bend ISD.
Thank you so much. Thank you everyone for being here. Thank you all the candidates as well. This shows we have a great diverse community. It is important that we know the last six years I have been working hard. I am proven leadership. As part of this board, we have created the Early Literacy Academy. We have driven high, high academic standards for all of our campus, campuses. We have given, women, universal course selection. We have provided innovation programs. We have early college high schools at Marshall High School, PTEC programs. And so it's important for me to, for you all to know that I am proven leadership. We need continuity as we move forward into the next six years of our board. And my, my, one of my priorities will be to get a new superintendent to, to enable, enable him, sorry, enable him or her to lead this, this district with all of the desires that all of the people on this call and the community that are listening, as well as continuity on this board. I bring experience and I make sure that all our kids get back to, to school face to face safely. That's, that's my, uh, my goals for the next six years.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, everyone, thank you for being here, all the candidates. We really appreciate you coming out. I know it's, you've, you've worked through lunch, you've worked through dinner hour, hours, uh, hard work. And I know you guys are all up to it, uh, to, to run for the board and I do appreciate that. The chamber appreciates you doing this. Uh, important to note, election dates, early voting starts, uh, early voting is April 19th through the 27th. Election day is May 1st. Remember, everyone out there can vote for everyone on this panel. Um, it doesn't matter where you live. Well, you got to live in Fort Bend ISD. Um, uh, I was told not to say vote early, vote often, um, but do vote early and get out there. Upcoming events, uh, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, April 8th at 5:30, uh, City of Sugar Land District 1 and District 4 Candidate Forum will be a virtual presentation uh right here. And I think that's all, no, I'm sorry, Education Division will host updates from Raise Your Hand on Thursday, April 29th from 11:30 to 1:00. Limited seating at the chamber. You can join us uh via Zoom. For more information on voting in all of these elections, you can go to fortbenchambervotes.com. Thank you everyone and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, my friend.